All right. Thank you and welcome to Murfreesboro City Council on Monday, June 3, 2013. And today we're going to continue our budget discussions. We have already spent considerable time going through the water and sewer, the cemetery, the outside agencies, the general fund budget. And that all occurred in May as that was presented to us by the city manager and staff. And at this time, we will continue discussions regarding our budget. And I believe the city manager has some additional information he would like to share with us regarding our fiscal year 2014 budget. And I'll allow him to go ahead and kind of go through those items if he wishes to at this time, unless the council has anything, any announcements they'd like to make before we get into that. Anything from the council members?
Mayor, since we start all our meetings with prayer, can we just open with prayer?
I'll be happy to do that. Would you like to do that for us, Ms.?
I'd be glad to, Mayor.
Thank you.
May we bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you just thanking you for blessing us to see this day that wasn't promised to us. And Lord, as we begin to conduct the business of our city, we ask that you be amongst us and that we, if we agree to disagree, that you still be amongst us and that we do what is fair for all the citizens of our city. This is my prayer, in your darling son's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. How about a pledge of allegiance? All rise.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. And Mr.. Lanz, if you'll go through the items that you have to kind of freshen up our budget.
Yes, sir. I'd be glad to. As long as I've been with the city, I'm not sure the city council has ever completed its budget review in one session. Granted, that was quite a long session on May 23rd, but it's typical for our process. After you've gone through the budget on a first pass, there's usually either items that you've asked for additional information or items that staff catches that got left out or changes that you might want to suggest. So what I've done is prepare a memorandum for you dated June the 3rd. I'm going to walk through that kind of section by section. Now, my memorandum in some cases is pointing out a clarification or change; in other cases, it's simply a point of information. But if, Mayor, if it's okay with you, it might be easy to follow if we just kind of walk through that piece by piece. The first item starts with the general fund and the general fund revenue. We had put a placeholder in the formula that corrects, that calculated the property tax. We had actually had a $220,000 deduct in that formula that should not have been there. We didn't discover that until after your budget review. So this actually is a change to the good. This would increase $220,000 to the property tax revenues and increase 4,400 to the reserve for uncollected property tax expense. So this spreadsheet formula is actually something that helps the city. I should say that on the attachment that we've got that shows the change in fund balance, the changes that I'm going to talk to you about this afternoon actually use less fund balance at the end of the day. Now, you may have some other changes, but the net effect of what we've found thus far is actually working in a positive direction for us. So any questions on the general fund revenue? That was just simply a calculation error.
And that's just dollars? That doesn't have anything to do with the appraisals we're getting from the property assessor or anything like that?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And, Mayor, you had asked for us to meet with Ms. Wright on, with the county assessor, Mr.. Mitchell. Ms. Wright's had a meeting with him and we'll have some additional meetings to talk to him about the 2013 tax rule, but we're going to continue to have a dialogue with him. He's certainly been very receptive and willing to communicate with the city, which we appreciate.
Well, we got a, I got a very quick email from him, so I'm certain that he's going to be very forthcoming and I appreciate his efforts. It's not an easy job and certainly in the first year. And then getting ready for another reappraisal next year, I know he's got his hands full, so I appreciate both you and Ms. Wright looking at that. Thank you.
Okay. The next on the general admin budget, I think, was more of a suggestion. I know Mr.. McFarland had mentioned that, to the extent staff can, to do periodic updates as opposed to saving our updates offer for at one time, we're certainly going to keep a good eye on that. Raymond Hillis oversees the maintenance here at City Hall. Raymond's been an outstanding employee and has been very proactive about what we can do maintenance-wise and has certainly, we're seeing a difference. We mentioned to you that we're getting ready to do some major upgrades here at City Hall with new carpeting, new elevator remodel and the finance department. And Raymond's certainly going to be a key player in all of that. You all had asked a question about the city's new Intranet. That's going to be our internal way to provide information to our employees and we certainly can give the city council access to that. That will help them, you see what we're posting to our city employees. We'll include information on our Intranet about benefits, about deadlines, about due dates, about policy changes adopted by the city council. That'll really become a new means of communication for our staff. You know, there's nothing like the good old fashioned face-to-face and the tailgate meeting every day, but we know with the volume of information that needs to be communicated using technology to, you know, cover a lot of ground very quickly will be good for us. Mr.. Lilly and his team have been very aggressive about working toward our Intranet and that's certainly something we can make available to the city council.
And you want to publicize the name of the city's Intranet and give credit where credit is due, or shall that remain, that person remain nameless?
Well, like a lot of things, we're trying to be more participatory. And we did have a contest. The winning entry was named Murfrees Web, so that'll be our internal communication device. And that was coming from our Billion Codes Department.
All right. M.W. from the Codes Department. Very good.
Yes.
Murfrees Web.
Yes.
Thank you.
Your social media is becoming a very good way for the city to communicate information with our community. Our city TV department has added YouTube and Twitter access. We've got a city Twitter. I've had a Twitter account as city manager for a while, but we've got a general city Twitter account as well and we'll be glad to send that address out to you as well.
I also want to mention that our new revised city's webpage debuted today. It's outstanding, in my opinion. I'm sure others will certainly, I don't want to get too many people too excited, but it looks great and very, very nice expansion of the service delivery through that website. So if, I'm sure council members have already looked at it and many of our residents who are going to get excited about being able to be notified by certain events and to follow the service requests and maybe even pay a water and sewer bill. I'm sure Mr.. Gore, bless his heart, has got so many collection issues, he just can't stand it. But the city court with our, will be able to pay tickets online. So a lot of new features to the city's website and some tremendous photography and really a very outstanding presentation. So my compliments to you and your staff and Mr.. Lilly and those that worked on it too. I believe Ms. Logan and all the communications department hats off for a, as usual, splendid job, a tremendous asset for the city and our residents.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor. We really wanted to freshen up the look, make it very clean and, but also be more in a way where we can have the community use that to find out what's going on. Is anything with the new launch? We bear everyone's patience as we find things that we want to add, information we may want to tweak. That was a ton of information to put up, so we know we'll be fine tuning that as we continue. I know one of the things we want to do is grab a picture of all our city council members. We're going to update the council page to have some photographs of you all and we'll want to get you before, I think, you get gone today to see if we can't take your picture so we could post it on our website.
You can just continue to use my kindergarten picture. That'll be fine.
The next department is a purchasing agent that came out of the legal department and the finance department, both. This was one of the final items that we had trimmed as we began to balance the budget. The purchasing agent really becomes a central place for the city to become more efficient in purchasing items, perhaps get the power of bulk purchase as well as really to free up some time in our city departments, especially our legal department. The grand total for this position, for the salary, FICA benefits and the equipment needed is about $90,000. And so that's certainly something that staff is supportive of and would look to direction from the city council. I should mention, as you know, we're going to have our city public hearing on the budget on Thursday evening, so we would ask that you not make any formal changes to the budget today until after you hold your public hearing. We always want to keep the legally advertised version of the budget as the one that we have the public hearing on, realizing that we know there's going to be some things you're going to want to change, but we would not want to do that until after the budget public hearing. So I don't know if you all have any questions on the purchasing position, but I might pause here to see what you might want to ask about that.
Well, it's my, you know, I felt like, having worked with purchasing agents and been aware of what they do, they will make their money back in usually two or three or four times. So realizing how the state's general services department works with purchases and then disposals, and I really feel like this is a great opportunity for us to get a handle on a lot of items. And I would recommend that we pursue going ahead and adding this to the budget. So I appreciate you bringing up the prospective costs and what it will be, but I think you'll get this person's salary back three or four times.
Mayor, you make a very good point. Our departments focus and specialize on providing a particular service. You can look out in the room and each one of these individuals are professionals and trained in a certain area, and that's their primary focus. At the end of the day, they all have to buy some sort of consumables. There's varying types of those and some of those can be quite a lot of money. And we've got staff that are, you know, certainly trained in purchasing, but what we don't have is somebody that can zoom out and try to tie all those individual things together. There's a lot of common denominators, you know, anything that's office and furniture related certainly cuts across many city departments, so this certainly can give us an opportunity to perhaps get more efficient.
Mayor, I tend to agree with your sentiment. And Rob, who would this individual report to? Would they report to?
Finance department is where we would look, although the legal department was certainly a very strong advocate, given the amount of contract work that is involving in our purchases. So it, although housed in finance, the legal department certainly was very much supportive of this.
I think everything funnels that way anyway. And then with the contracts and everything else that we have to deal with, I think that would be an excellent addition to our organization chart. And we actually have been very frugal across the 11 years that I've been mayor and everybody's been on this council realizes, we've not added positions over and over and over again. We're a pretty lean organization and if we have a need here that can put that together, I believe that's an excellent addition to our city organization chart.
Okay.
You can proceed.
Thank you. The next section is dealing with our human resource department. The human resource director's taken a look at his department's operation and that's certainly been one of our departments that's undergone more change than perhaps some of our other city departments. We've seen the water and sewer payroll come over to the H.R. department. We've had to deal with the healthcare reform issues. We've made some major structural changes in our health insurance program, up to and including wellness initiatives. And so as this department has begun to change and realizing engaging our employees is something that you all have expected from us and certainly the manager's office is being more proactive with. The H.R. department has taken a, more of a lead role in that. And so we've attached as kind of a follow-up, a copy of the change in the reporting responsibilities in H.R., where Ms. Russell is the assistant H.R. director, would take more of a direct responsibility over the benefits component. And so we wanted to share that information with you, as well as talk a little bit about borough fit. This is the city's wellness program where full-time city employees have the opportunity to be members at Sportscom and Patterson to workout. The cost to them really depends on what their income level is and their tax status, but it's typically a fairly nominal amount. The question had come up about whether we could extend the borough fit to our retirees. That's certainly something that we're supportive of. The retirees are carried on the city's health insurance program and to the extent they can be healthier, that's better for the city's experience and our health claims. So we are going to be meeting over the next week to talk about borough fit in general and up to and including the retiree piece. A little bit of the trick on the retirees is since it's been determined thus far to be a taxable benefit, the retirees don't have a paycheck that we can collect from, so we'll need to figure out both the taxable status as well as how we might collect the tax amount. But certainly extending that benefit to our retirees where they could work out at city facilities is something we could be very supportive of.
All right. Any comments regarding that?
The judicial department, you will see an item on your agenda this Thursday to increase the parking fines downtown. As explained during our budget presentation, the first $2 was having to be sent entirely to the state of Tennessee. So we are asking for an increase on that first ticket from $2 to $5. While that still does not completely recoup the city's cost, it was in keeping with the survey of other downtown parking fines and you will see that on your agenda for this Thursday. Mr.. Crumley had done some outreach with the Downtown Merchants Association and Main Street. We wanted to make sure that they were familiar with what we were recommending. Certainly, to the extent parking spaces are not abused by folks where they keep people who want to shop and eat downtown, we think the increase in fines may help churn parking spaces a little bit more.
All right. Any questions or comments regarding that, the parking citations or the, I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to review that if anyone has anything in depth that they would like to look at on Thursday night when we go through that item.
Okay. One of the other requests was regarding the judicial department's performance measures to include court find receivables and citations processed, and you can find that on page 96. So we do have that information included.
And, you know, I have a tendency to think that's going to look like a fairly large number, but it also makes me assume that most other cities face the same receivable. Is there any way to compare that with anybody else at some point in the future? It's not an immediate request, but if you're going to put that on and maybe through MTS with your benchmarking study or whatever else, I have a tendency to think everybody's got the same problem. And, I mean, you know, we've got people that go to different counties to buy tags and do all kinds of things. So I don't want us to get really down on ourselves or overwhelm ourselves with a big receivable number, which I think will be fairly indicative of what every city court on a relative basis faces across the state.
Okay. We can take a look at that, Mayor. We're participating again in the TML benchmark, or the MTS benchmarking study. We were in that a few years ago where they did police, fire and solid waste, but now they've expanded it to a number of other city services. So we're excited about, you know, getting back in that effort where we can compare ourselves in different measures like this. It becomes a good chance for us to measure ourselves against Murfreesboro year after year, but this does give us a chance to compare ourselves to some other communities and whether or not these are included in that, it certainly becomes an environment while we're all together, we could sit down and compare information. So we'll look to that. Not every city's set up like we are with city court. You know, some, like Smyrna, have general sessions, which will be different than what we have, but we'll see what we can do to find some peers regarding that. The police department, in order to track the operation and maintenance of the firing range that we participated with Rutherford County in, we want to take $5,000 out of the operation and maintenance of buildings and move it to a new line item, operation and maintenance of the firing range. No net change to the budget, but wanted to call your attention to the fact that we wanted to pull that into a separate line item so we could follow it year after year.
So we'll contribute that to somebody?
That'll be, when there's a need to do some work at the firing range, there's an agreement with the county to split the cost and so our share of that maintenance cost will come out of this, 50-50. In fire and rescue, we had incorrectly counted the number of EMTs. Each EMT receives a supplement in the amount of $1,207.44 per year, so we're going to increase that to reflect the total number of EMTs we actually have currently certified. Again, that's something, once they achieve that certification level, we pay the supplement and we had missed a few in calculating the budget. In the planning department, Mayor, you had talked to us a little bit about funding a comprehensive plan. You know, while we've got a number of comprehensive plans already in place for the city, whether they be land use, major thoroughfare plans, our capital improvement plan, our bikeway, greenway, blueway plan was recently adopted. What we don't have is a comprehensive citywide, comprehensive plan. So in looking at what other communities have done, we suggested a budget of $200,000 of that. I've given you all some links to some other communities that, maybe some examples for a comprehensive plan that would result in us, you know, competitively looking for a firm to do that. You know, one of the elements that, you know, we see in a comprehensive plan would be a future land use plan. And as our, as you mentioned, as our economy continues to get better and we're now seeing more activity at the planning commission level and now the city council level, you know, this may be something for you all to consider. So again, there's other comprehensive plans out there as examples and samples, but these were a couple of the ones that I thought looked pretty good. And I'm familiar with a couple of those communities and looked like they had done a nice job, so.
Well, Mr.. Young wasn't here when I suggested this and I'm just reminded of his service on the planning commission and the Salem land use plan, the Blackman land use plan. It gives our residents and our property owners an excellent opportunity to get together early and to look ahead to see what they want and how they want to use the properties that are in the city and how they would like to be treated, when properties come up for use or potential use. So I really feel like this is a good opportunity to hire some outside folks to come in and bring our community members together to try to look forward to see what we can do across our community, since we, so many of our neighborhoods are expanding and we have so many new neighborhoods that are expanding. So that's, I just feel like that's a very good use of our taxpayers' money to get us all together and try to go through some of those things that we can study for the future. So I appreciate you considering that and I would ask the council to, when we do look forward to revising the budget and finishing it up, to add those funds in for that use.
And that would require, that is one item that is not in the proposed budget, so you would need to take affirmative action to put it in. And as you look at the examples in there, you're going to see not only the future land use plan, but you're going to see plans for community facilities such as parks, fire stations, police. So it really does take a look at the entire community as well as set some policy statements about what kind of growth you want to see and how it should look like, so.
Well, and I'd like to call it that comprehensive or future land use plan, but if we do hire somebody and they come up with a more encompassing name that we can use, I certainly would like to do that. But the intent of it is to try to help us focus our different neighborhoods on what they would like to see in their neighborhood and what property owners would see as uses, potential uses for property in all of our neighborhoods.
One of the other comments that we heard was having the separation in the budget between public transit and traffic. The traffic is the traffic signals and the maintenance of those, and those actually are in two separate budgets tied together in the transportation department. Those are found on page 133 to 135. The risk management fund, we've completed top to bottom reviews of the city's pension fund, which turned into the retirement program for new employees. As you know, we've taken a three-year look at our health insurance program and analyzed that to continue to provide great health insurance to our employees, but to figure out ways that we could make sure that the health insurance plan was sustainable. And now we're turning our attention to risk management. They've certainly provided, you know, great resource to the city. So this isn't any kind of comment that they're not doing a good job, but really to look at them and see how we can get efficient and effective. So we're going to look at a couple of different items on that. Ms.. McGannon, Mr. Rucker, Mr. Crumley are going to be very active in that. So that'll be, although there's not necessarily budgeted funds in that, that'll be one of the initiatives this year for us to take a look at risk management and be very systematic about looking at the different insurance coverages to see what economies we can pick A question arose about the schedule for the bleacher covers. As we begin to renovate our various parks, that work will be done in conjunction with the park renovations. This wasn't going to be a separately bid project where we did bleacher covers, but we were going to take that up as we did improvements to the rest of the parks. And we certainly have been very aggressive in funding parks and recreation in our community. The recently adopted CIP includes $49 million in the CIP. The senior center, we had a keying error. The operation and maintenance of the building should go from $10,000 to $20,000. That was a staff error. This will be on the attachment that you see for you today. A question was asked about the fencing at the West Main Convenience Center and that's scheduled to be replaced this month. Community development has received an increase this year. We've got a revised budget for you on community development. Mr.. Callow, as he prepared the budget, did not know what his federal allocation was going to be. That was received just a few days ago, so we've got a revised community development budget that's shown on the appendix.
Is that a 30-something percent increase or?
14.8%.
Okay.
But weren't you forecasting a decrease when you initially?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Under-promise, over-deliver.
We appreciate that.
Thank you. We're proud of you.
Next, on the outside agencies. I put this as a placeholder. I know typically when we go through a budget review, the outside agencies are one area where the council may offer some suggestions on changes to the outside agencies. And while city staff didn't have any changes, we knew this is a part of the budget where you typically bring that up. And I put that here for you all to give us some direction about changes you might want to make.
If council members had some items that were either projected or weren't projected or some increases or some first-time requests, if you're prepared to speak on that now, certainly happy for you to. And if you want to reserve sometime Thursday night to go through any of those additional requests or whatever, I'd be happy for you to do it. Mr.. Young?
I have one that I would.
Why don't you speak to that? And I did pass out some information to the council last week, or the week before last, from the soil conservation folks.
I think you've seen the handout that Mr. Mayor Brad gave last week for the Rutherford County Soil Conservation District. I would like to request that $2,500 be put in the budget for this. What they're primarily service for the city would be to promote gardens, technical expertise for our school system in gardenings. They have a particular trailer that they go and they have their tools. They grow, help the students grow gardens, which teaches plant science, science, math and where food comes from, biology at the grade levels, one through six. I've been promised tomatoes. No, I have not been promised tomatoes, but I would like to.
He's so mad.
Yes, you have to.
Will they be thrown at you? If you don't do it, will they be thrown at you?
Neither way.
Yeah.
Either way, but it would enhance the educational system for our school systems and that's the primary item that piqued my interest in this. So I would like to ask the council to give that full consideration.
And that's item five, is that correct, on our request for funding from outside agencies?
They're asking for 5,000 and I'm proposing 2,500. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr.. Young. Anything else, Mr.. Young, besides that particular?
Not tonight.
All right. Anybody else have other items on their wish list? Mr.. Smotherman?
Yes. The one that, the item that I would like for us to look at would be the Uncle Dave Makin' Days. Traditionally, it's item number 16 on our list. Traditionally, we've given them $5,000 per year. Just due to weather conditions that have been outside their control over the last three or four years, we've either burnt people up or we've drowneded them. And at that event, it's based on really that one main big And at that event, it's based on really that one main big night that they have their main act. This year, they've got Ricky Skaggs coming, who I think will be a real asset and probably the biggest Uncle Dave Makin' Days event ever. But they have requested $8,000 instead of $5,000 to help offset the expense of security. And just because of recent events, we're trying to put a focus this year on making sure that we watch a little closer for things that traditionally we probably haven't looked close enough at. So I would like to see us increase that from eight, or $5,000 to $8,000, as requested.
That's number 16?
16.
So it would be an increase of $3,000?
$3,000 increase, exactly.
What we've done in the past.
That's great.
Is anybody else, anything else?
I have one there.
Yes, Ms. Harris.
Item number 38, the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Scholarship.
All right.
This organization has raised over $1 million from the community and serviced over, I would say, 500 students. And all the funding has come from the community. And I would like to see if we can increase that to their requested four, if not 3,000.
No, the scholarships they provided are local, too, aren't they? That's a good suggestion.
And this year, we have 43 students recognized.
And our IT director, Mr. Lilly, was one of the...
One of the recipients.
First recipients the first 10 years, I believe, of that scholarship fund. All right, those are three absolutely worthy additions. Anything else at this time? All right, we'll give Mr. McFarland a shot when he gets here. And anyone else?
Madeline, what increase are you asking for the Martin Luther King Scholarship?
I would like to see the requested amount, 4,000, but if not, if we can go 3, be fine.
That program's been going on for over about 30 years. It's really, it's really been a wonderful program. Kudos to your mom and Dr. Smith for pretty much developing that program, and they're getting ready to go by the wayside and turn it over to some other folks. It's really an outstanding program. It really is.
And I do have to reveal also, I'm on the board, so, I mean, but I need to reveal that. Yeah, but my mom is coming off.
Yeah.
For her health, she's coming off.
Madeline, I'm not on the board, but I did attend the scholarship banquet this year with the mayor and several other council members. And it's a fantastic event, and it's, I think it's very admirable, and I would encourage people's 4,000 mark on that.
Thank you. Mayor and council members.
All right. Anything else? Before I turn it back to Mr. Lyons regarding special revenue funds. Mr. Lyons?
Actually, two other changes have come up since we published your packet on Friday for the general fund. One would be $10,000 in the building and codes department. We want to provide the ability to have people pay for their permits and fees using a credit card. That's been a longstanding request from contractors. In order to affect that, we need some software programming. So that would be an additional $10,000 in the building codes department that, with your approval, we'll put that in the information for Thursday post-public hearing. And then, secondly, Ms. Burt had indicated that on her part-time help, she is not going to fill an assistant nurse-on-duty position, but would like to add some additional hours to the volunteer coordinator. We're currently paying a volunteer coordinator to help take people who want to assist at the senior center and plug them in where they have time, talent, and ability to go out and provide service to the seniors. So she would like to increase the number of hours that the volunteer coordinator works from 15 hours per week to 25 hours per week. I know she's said this has been a big benefit. There's so many people wanting to do things, it's difficult for staff to piece all that together. So when people want to volunteer their time, we want to treat them right and make sure they're where they need to be and be productive with that time, so we can certainly support that. There'll be no change to the budget, and actually that'll be a probably a net decrease to the senior center. But certainly want to, we'll include that with your material on Thursday. Like I said, the budget gets to be a dynamic process. I'm sure after I walk out of tonight's meeting, we may find something else. But we did see those two other general fund things. Before I turn to special revenue funds in the airport, we've got some changes there that really, I don't know that it necessarily is different from what we told you, but it has to do with the timing. So when we have the re-roofing of hangars two and three in the tree clearing project, we've got to figure out the timing and the way the grant money works. So you can see on the attachment how we're actually going to increase some of the federal grants by $96,000, but then we're taking, we've got the expenditures for the hangars as well, so those kind of go coincide.
All right. Any questions? If not, keep going.
Mayor, that kind of summarizes the attachment that we had for you regarding the changes that have come up thus far. Then the last piece of my recommendation is a follow-up to information I had provided to you previously regarding new positions, promotions, and market adjustments. I've laid on your table a revised list. There were three employees that were left out of that inadvertently that should have been included, highlighted in yellow. But as I've explained to you, let me kind of start at the very beginning and go big picture before we look at this list. Certainly, the city's got an outstanding track record about being very progressive and aggressive in funding pay increases for our city employees. Over the last three budgets, we've proposed 3.5% increases for all city employees each of the last three budget years. I know as we look at comparing Murphysboro to other cities in Tennessee, the fact of the matter is, we've been either number one or number two in the amount of pay increases we've offered all city employees over the last couple of years, and we've been able to do that without a property tax increase. The pay plan that we've had has been in place now for a number of years, and in order, because that is a market-based approach, every other year, we do a pay plan update, which is what we did this current proposal. And when Mr. Thompson analyzed the city's compensation plan, he found that the market had moved a little bit. I know in order to make sure that the city's pay plan stayed at your stated goal of being better than average, Mr. Thompson recommended add a step, drop a step. So what that means essentially is that the starting pay for every city job would be increased by 3.5%. The top-out pay for every single city job would increase by 3.5%. It would mean that our employees would see a 3.5% pay increase this year. It would mean that there were no topped-out employees this year. And of the three recommendations given to us by Mr. Thompson, what's in your budget is the most aggressive and most expensive recommendation in that pay plan. Again, our employees do a phenomenal job, and so as we looked at where we wanted to go for budget, we heard you all say we need to do everything we can pay-wise, and that's what we included in your budget, was that 3.5% increase. So when we look over the last three years, that's three consecutive years of funding the city's pay plan. Having said that, we also take a point at this time of the year to take a look to see where we want to go. And we have talked for at least two years now about really driving toward a pay-for-performance type model. While our current pay plan certainly has got some advantages, like any pay plan, there's things about it that we see that can be made better. And so as I've shared with you now for two budgets, driving toward a pay-for-performance model is where we want to go. And so one of the big initiatives this year for us is to do a total revamp of the city's classification and compensation plan. The budget, as you know, when we talked at the HR department presentation, includes $70,000 to bring a firm in that would be competitively selected, to take a completely fresh look at the city's classification plan for jobs and how we compensate that, up to and including a performance-based model. Now, that's going to require a significant amount of involvement by both the city council and our city staff, and we've outlined a course of action to kick that project off, should you include the $70,000 in the budget. It would begin with a consultant coming in and getting a pay philosophy from the city council. It would then involve looking at both federal requirements and federal mandates, as well as what other progressive cities are doing. And as that classification and compensation plan would be put together, it would certainly involve a great deal of employee communications, employee input, training of our supervisors, training for our employees, and rolling that out. None of that, to be very frank, is very easy. I've been through two pay plan projects, and there's certainly a lot of interest in that, and we want to do it the right way, and that's to be very focused and be very deliberate and be very inclusive as we develop the city's pay plan. So that's where we want to drive to. The idea that we can look at our employees and say, you know what, when you go over and above, when you exceed expectations and when you perform at a high level, you've given yourself the ability to earn more than the employee who may be barely meeting expectations or suffering some performance problem. We think performance ought to have something to do with someone's compensation. So again, that's all about setting clear expectations, about training, about communicating, about good supervising. But we've got a top-notch staff. They're phenomenal, and we want to give those folks who are exceeding expectations and performing at a high level, the ability perhaps to earn something more through a performance management system, maybe something more than 3.5%. And to the very small number of employees that may not be doing what they need to do, they're not going to get the full 3.5%. They may not get anything. But that will be, that will only occur if they've been through a process and they've not met expectations that were clearly set out. So we want to get to a place where that's where we're driving toward. So that's where we're at now, where we want to go. So one of the things that we think makes sense for us is to drive in that direction. I think that's something that I've heard from the council, and frankly, I've heard from our employees. They know that if they work hard and go over and above, they ought to have the right to earn some more. During the budget process for many years, and our employee handbook provides for this, is that we also have the ability during budget to take a look at employees and where they're currently at, and if their job has changed, if their decision-making has increased, if their autonomy has increased, if the number of folks they've supervised has increased, if their duties have fundamentally changed, that this is the time of year that we step back and take a look at that group of employees and say, you know what, we want to treat everybody fair, and that means if they're doing the work, that they ought to be compensated for that. So that attached list of employees is the result of the work that we've done this year to make some adjustments and some amendments. And the total amount in terms of base salary, there is an error on the spreadsheet with the yellow. It should total $33,851. Again, we've got $117 million budget that's in the general fund. So we have a very small number of employees. We think that their jobs changed. We think that the duties that they're performing, their responsibilities have changed, or their comparison to the market is such that we're recommending this $33,000 and change difference in salary on that $117 million budget. We don't make this recommendation lightly, but it is a process that we've been through. We've stepped back and looked at what it is that they do, and we do make those recommendations to you.
Mr. Young?
Mr. Lyons, can you get all this done for next year's budget?
The new pay plan? I think we can go a long way to having the classification and compensation done. Now, here's the part of that that may take some time, Mr. Young. To have that completed and rolled out to every single employee, that may be a little bit aggressive. I can tell you, we know this is one of those areas that there's a lot of interest in our It takes a good amount of time. I think that would be part of our expectation to you, is to give you a calendar and set some expectations about what can be done by this time next year. I think we can go a long way into analyzing it, to rolling it out to the entire staff and getting all the training done, may take a little bit more time. I'm certainly confident in two years we can get a large part of this implemented, but getting us on a path to get this done correctly. Can we develop a study? We sure can. What we want to be very deliberate about is that our supervisors and our employees understand it and we can do it successfully. If we rush it and folks don't understand it, then I'm afraid we'll be in a worse-off spot. But this is one of those things that I think is extremely important for us and want to move in that direction. But I don't want to say that we can get it done top to bottom in the organization and shortcut some of the training and shortcut some of the communications.
Mr. Gilli?
Rob, and I know that's going to take some time, but as much as you can rush, once we get the consultant in, to move that towards knowing where we're going this time next year, I think we need to do. I understand that we tweaked where we're at this year and that the 3.5% is considered on the more aggressive end of what's recommended, and no employee wants to not have a raise, but at the same time, add a step, drop a step, the analogy you and I were talking about earlier, it really benefits those who are coming into the organization more than it does those who have been here over the long haul. And the analogy that I used with you, it's sort of like the employees that are sandwiched in the middle of the organizational chart. It's like, as far as their pay is concerned, they're on an escalator going at the same speed the escalator is, as opposed to climbing a stationary ladder when we do this add a step, drop a step. In other words, we're not rewarding them for really the years of service and their merit, as opposed to just having the situation where you can have somebody here several years and then someone come in at the same job and then making close to the same amount of money.
And that, what you're really describing, Mr. Gilli, is a compression issue. As I mentioned, the last three budgets, we've recommended a 3.5% pay increase. So if you put the step number aside for a second, because that's not really what you take to the bank, what you take to the bank is the paycheck. The paycheck has increased 3.5%. You know, in this proposed budget, it increased 3.5%. Last budget, 3.5%. The budget before that, the pay plan and their pay has advanced. But when we try to keep the pay plan competitive and we add a step and drop a step, that does create some challenges with compression, and compression is a very expensive problem to fix. However, having something that's based on performance is where I think we all would like to get to, and being aggressive about trying to get that completed as quickly as we can, we certainly would like to do that.
Otherwise, we have issues like we created, where someone gets promoted, takes on additional responsibility, but there's just a very nominal increase in pay, then we're not really providing an incentive to take on those additional responsibilities, even though that employee's getting a raise every year, they're not being rewarded for taking on additional supervisory responsibilities with their job. And I think this study you're talking about will go a long way in addressing that, and the sooner, the better.
Yes.
The other issue I wanted you to address, because it's a question we get calls every year about, is COLAs or the retirees, the position the city has taken about that over the years, why we do, why we don't, when we do. Can you go over that, sort of what the administration's philosophy has been in that regard?
Yeah, I'd be glad to, Mr. Gilli. The cities, for our current retirees, are all on our defined benefit plan. And the defined benefit plan says that you get 2% of your pay times years of service, up to a max of 60% of your high-five salary, high-five years of salary. So that is a known benefit. It's certainly one that the trend has been away from. A lot of communities, Murphysboro included, are moving toward the defined contribution, where you've got money, you contribute, and that's what you've got to retire on. But our defined benefit says just that, that your benefit is going to be defined, and the city employees in the city have been very proud of our retirement program, our pension plan. That is funded every year, based on a percent of our overall payroll. And when that calculation is done, it's based on knowing what everyone's retirement benefit's going to be, how many years of service they had, what their pay was, and it goes into that base calculation. The city typically does not provide a cost-of-living increase on that defined benefit plan. That certainly is something that, while it's happened...
Maybe 20s? Have I been my 20s?
2006, maybe, is that the last?
It's been very infrequent, and I believe the first time it was done, it was... It's been very infrequent, and I believe the first time it was done, it was at a point in time where many of our retirees have been retired from the city a long time, where the city's pay was not as competitive as it is currently. So, we were trying to make up in those cost of livings for a point in time where the city's pay was not where it is now. And the retirees that we have now, by and large, have been with the city at a point where our pay was very competitive. So, while we certainly understand that question comes up each year, the defined benefit plan is just that, it was set and defined, and I hope that answers your question.
It does, and obviously, under the new plan under defined contribution, it becomes a moot point, because at time of retirement, our contribution, it's a matter of how, just like in our private lives, how those funds have performed over the course of the contribution period.
Yes, Ms. Harris.
Will you finish? Mr. Young?
I was going to ask a question. Go ahead.
Because you had already started, Joyce. Go ahead.
I was going to say, on our new study, two years is a long time. Could we budget in for 18 months, a year for the study, and a year for six months for training?
I think perhaps, Mr. Young, let me talk to Mr. Godwin and see if we can't get some ideas on a calendar. When I said it would take more than one year, that was full implementation, everybody and all the training. Again, that communication piece is one of the things I know we've talked about. I don't know if Mr. Godwin will be prepared to talk about that now, or we'll get some information for you on Thursday.
Ms. Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members, this is my last budget, and I have two months, 10 more months left on this council. And I want to, first of all, thank all of the employees, especially my department heads, for the outstanding job you've done in the budget that you have been presented in the almost four years I've served on this council for this term. And Ms. McGannon, your staff, you have done a fabulous job, not only at regular council meeting, but budget time, to make sure we stay legal and don't get locked up or whatnot, go to prison or whatnot. So, you've done a great job. And Ms. Wright, I don't know what I can say about you and your staff. In my four years on the council, you have accolades out of the roof, so fabulous job to you and your staff. And to my fellow council members, Vice Mayor, Washington and Mayor, I want to thank each and every one of you for helping me these four years review the budget and analyze the budget. And Mr. Lyons and Mr. Crumley, you do a fabulous job, and I've told you this, with our budget. And we've met a couple of times on the budget this year, and I'm all for the budget that has been presented thus far, all but the salary portion. I have some great concerns about the salary. We say we're going to go 3.5% across the board, and we're not going to call any names of any positions, we're not going to call any names, but we said we're going to go 3.5%. And this same scenario came up last year, 3.5%, I think the top-down people got 2%, et cetera, et cetera. I do want to, while I'm thinking about it, thank you for, I asked you to include the part, I mean, the part-time people in the Christmas fund this year, and you're going to do that, and I appreciate that. And I also appreciate the fact that they will not be getting a different letter than everybody. Everybody's going to get the same letter, Christmas letter. But I have a great concern that nine employees are going to get more than 3.5%. And we kind of went through the same thing last year, when we had the 3.5%, but this time, it's different. It's 3.5% across the board, but we have nine people getting percentages ranging from 4% up to almost 17%. And I have a big concern and a big problem with that. So, I would like to know, how would these nine people pull out of the 790 employees we have?
Ms. Gels Harris, this was a process where we stepped back and looked to see what these individuals were doing, and how did it compare to the market? And so, as we've explained...
What are these people doing?
Sure. Well, you almost have to take them on an individual basis.
No, no, I'm talking about when you said job performance.
Sure. Well, I'm talking about job responsibilities, decision-making, autonomy.
Okay. I'm going to talk about those three. Let's start with that.
And super...
Responsibilities.
So, we, okay, I'm sorry, excuse me.
No, I'm going to let you finish. Go ahead.
When we looked at the entire organization, we looked to find where their situations, where employees were doing something above and beyond what their job title was. Did they have additional responsibilities that wasn't being incorporated into the pay plan update? And these were individuals that we felt, it wasn't that they were just doing a good job or working hard. That would not have been enough. There's lots of folks who would be on this list if that's what the list was going to look like. But we saw individuals whose responsibilities and job had changed to the point that we felt an adjustment was warranted. Again, it's less than $35,000 on a $117 million budget. We were pretty strategic about trying to figure out where we saw some inequities that either due to the employees' job functions, or what's been added to their plate, we saw a need to ask for a change. This is something that has happened for a number of years with the city, and it's why I step back. I know this is a difficult part of the decision, and one of the reasons going to a performance-based system is going to help us in the long run, but Ms. Gels Harris, this is what we felt was fair, based on paying our employees for the jobs that they're doing.
And I want everyone to know that Mr. Crumley and Mr. Lyons, we've had these conversations, and I told them I would be bringing this up. Now, you started off by saying, Mr. Lyons, we're looking at being fair to the entire organization. Well, based on this, we're being very unfair to the entire organization. You're talking about responsibilities. You said these responsibilities have increased. Okay? If these responsibilities have increased, then I want to see a ripple effect going down, okay? If these people up here, their responsibilities have increased, I would think the lowest man down here has more responsibility. It's how I look at that. And you say that this is from what you see. Is it your observations? Are your department heads telling you this? When you say from what I see, or we see? First of all, let me preface by saying this. In my opinion, I ask myself all the time, who is the most important element in our city? And my answer is, the people. The people are. And who are a big portion of the people, and those are our employees. Now, in our overview, we talk about safe, safety, and everything like that. Well, we have employees on the line a lot, and I ask myself the question, let's say the solid waste people decide, hey, we're not coming to work for two or three days. What would our city look like if they don't come to work? Big part of our organization, but I don't see them getting more than 3.5%. Firefighters, let's say it's 90 degrees outside today, they go to a fire already in progress. When they put on their equipment, it'd be at least 1,200 degrees inside there. That's why they rotate so much out at fires. I don't see an increase coming to them. Two or three weeks ago, Demosys was robbed early in the morning. I happened to go by, their police officer, they are running everywhere. I don't know how much equipment they wear, but I think I stole about 46, maybe additional pounds. No covering of the head or anything. I don't see an increase for them. And we can go to all the rest of the departments, that's just what IT has come up with some fabulous ideas that we have implemented immediately. I don't see any increases coming out of there. So, I'm not understanding. And then, I had to think about it. On May the 7th, 2012, right here at this council meeting, when this came up last year, other people getting more than 3.5%, there was a directive given to do a study, bring it back to the council. We're going to look at all the positions and bring everybody up at the same time. And my question is, we're bringing nine people up right now, let's say 34,000. Where's the study we asked for?
Let me maybe try to address two parts of that, Ms. Gels Harris. There's no question, everybody in this room agrees, our employees are phenomenal. There's no difference of opinion when it comes to...
So, what are we saying to them, though, when we are pulling out some, that everybody's great, but we're pulling out some for more money than others? So, what are we saying to them?
Well, we all...
How great are they?
We all agree our employees are phenomenal. That is not at all in question. As I mentioned to you, the last three budgets that we have brought to you have the highest pay increases for city employees of any city in Tennessee that I'm aware of. Number one, I'm not aware of another city that has been as aggressive about funding pay increases for our city employees than Murfreesboro, Tennessee. And I think that's a pretty strong record by the city council and our administration.
But is it fair? But are we fair? But are we fair on the increases?
To be the number-one city in the state of Tennessee, I think that's very...
I know we're number-one, we're number-one in a lot of things, but are we fair to these employees? I cannot go out here and shake a department head's hand tonight, you're doing a great job. If I sit up here and go along with nine people getting more than 3.5% because they are doing an outstanding job.
Ms. Gels Harris, perhaps I didn't explain it well enough, and I apologize for that. In my opinion, and it's my recommendation, and I'm turning my recommendation over to the council to get direction from you all, what I've seen in these cases are employees on this list who are having to do things that were not part of their job a year ago or two years ago, that their job has expanded, that we've asked them to do more. I didn't say work hard or do a good job. We've got lots of folks that do that every day, all day. I can look out in this room right here and see folks who are doing that. So, are we being fair if we're asking them to do a job and not compensating them for that, is one of the questions that I ask myself, is that we expect that we compensate our employees to do a job? And in my opinion, in these cases, it wouldn't be fair to ask them to do this work without having it based on the same factors and the same ways we look at every other city job. In some of these cases, the individuals on this list were matched to other positions in the Burris and Thompson survey. So, let me kind of use an example. In one case, we had employees whose duties matched in the survey data to a generalist. This employee now is going to have some additional managerial and supervisory responsibilities. And so, when we look at the job description that says they're a manager, they're a supervisor, they have direct responsibility over a major functional area, they no longer match to this job over here, they match to a different job. And when you match it to the different job, just like we have every other city employee, we follow the process to say, this is the job, this is the match in the survey, here is the result. The result said that this employee was not matched properly, and the increase is what I am recommending. It was a situation where we were comparing what they do to matching it to their peer in the survey. We did, we matched our firefighters to the peers in the survey, we matched our solid waste employees to their peers in the survey, we matched all the folks in this room that were in the benchmarks study to the position in the survey. So, we're trying to treat folks exactly the same.
Another observation I made, these people that you're giving this tremendous increase to, I looked up job titles. First of all, I noticed where you changed the job titles. The job titles were changed, and I looked up the definition of these job titles, and according to the definition, the things you said they are going to be doing in addition was already part of that job definition. So, they're not doing anymore. If you look up the job description and you look up what additional things they are going to be doing, that's part of that job description.
I put the proposed title in there. The title has not changed in the budget.
On a couple of them, they have changed, according to what I see. But in essence, Mr. Lyons, I'm just saying, if we're going to go 3.5%, let's go across the board, and I'm going to go back to the minutes of May the 12th, May the 17th, 2012, where a directive was given to do a comprehensive study, bring that back to the council, and at that time, do all increases at the same time. And again, I have not seen that study. And so, without seeing that study, I say go 3.5% across the board until we see that study.
Well, Ms. Gels Harris, we did do the class, we did the pay study update that was transmitted to you on April the 3rd.
No, sir. No, sir. Let's talk about that. I got that. No, sir. This is not a study of 790 employees. No, sir. And in fact, you are saying that in your 2014 budget, you have budgeted for that study to be done. So, therefore, if you said you're budgeting in 2014 for the pay study to be done, then this can't be it. And of 790 employees, and we're handed a study like this this then, a comprehensive study, then maybe whoever we hired to do this, we may need to look at somebody else doing it, because this is not a pay study.
The money that was budgeted by this city council did not fund a comprehensive pay plan.
But we asked for one. We asked for one last year.
We indicated that that was not going to be able to be completed in the amount of time we were going to do the biannual update.
That's the point I'm trying to make, Mr. Lyons. We have not done it, and we said we're going to base the salaries on the pay study. If the study has not been done, we need to go 3.5% across the board. And I'm not saying these people, because I don't want to call any names, because I don't want to embarrass anybody. I wouldn't want to be embarrassed. But I say these people are doing a fabulous job. I don't know all of them, but the ones I know, they are. But I also know a lot of other people that I say are doing a fabulous job. We do not need to make any increase over 3.5% until we have done a comprehensive study and go straight across the board, because our employees are looking at us this year because this same scenario came up last year, and then we have turned around and come back this year and added more names, and we just cannot do that to our employees. We cannot do that to our employees. Now, I'm sorry, I don't want to get upset, but we cannot mistreat the organization as a whole. We can't do it. I'm just, I'm sorry if I'm getting upset. We cannot mistreat our city employees. We cannot do it. And I'm glad the department heads are sitting out here, because in the morning, they're going to be surrounded by wanting an explanation of this craziness that has been presented. We cannot do it. I am for the increases. I'm for giving these people an increase, but anytime we have an increase rising from 4% to 17%, and we have others getting 3.5%, and insurance is going up, maybe I'm thinking 16%, what about this little man down here who has a 3.5%? And they're in the family plan of the insurance policy, plan of the insurance plan, their insurance is 580-something dollars going to be for next year. May have to go out and get a part-time job or something, just to pay the insurance. It's just like at Christmas. You know, a child really wants a bicycle, okay, you hand them a bike, and the next day, you take it from them. We cannot do it, Mr. Lyons. That's my opinion. I'm just, this part of the budget has upset me tremendously.
Rob, just for clarification's sake, your interpretation of the request that you're asking for is not based on performance of doing the job, which is basically what the 3.5 is more of a performance incentive. The request that you're making for these nine-so employees, 10, 13 employees, the request that you're making for the 13 employees, that would be more based on job description or job responsibilities changing. Is that not correct?
Correct. And that's why I use the example of the one employee, when in the past, that position in the study would match to a generalist position. What's going to happen July 1 with your approval is, is that that employee is now going to be directly supervising several employees, having responsibilities over a functional area. And when you look at what that job looks like compared to the survey data, it changes from a generalist to a manager. And just in that kind of generic description, you could see where a manager is going to make more than a generalist. That's part of what you see in a table like that.
But with the job... But with the job description or job responsibilities changing, these are more to be looked at as promotions rather than they are salary increases based on job performance, because this has nothing to do with their performance, it's the taking on of additional responsibilities. Is that correct?
Yeah, in a way, it is. But in some cases, the, the title is what the title is, and it wouldn't necessarily be a promotion. And instead of just putting it in the budget, it didn't, I wanted to put these on a piece of paper so you all could look at them as a group and realize what we were recommending. I didn't want to just stick it in the budget. Even though the title would be the same, I wanted to make sure you all knew we saw a change in the position, saw a change in what they were doing, and wanted to call it to your attention so that you all could, could see it.
And I guess I, I kind of perceive the same perception as Ms. Gels Harris, in the sense that these are kind of based on what you're seeing. And it's not that you don't, not see what's going on in solid waste and not what's going on with Parks and Rec, but, but the, the part that's a little bit hard to swallow on this is every one of these positions just about are at City Hall. And they're not really performance based on, you know, I'm sure the fire department may have taken on additional responsibilities, and, and there's other managers in the city that have taken on additional responsibilities. And if, if it's based on job description change, then, then, then I can go along with this. If it's based on just saying we're trying to get them back in line with the, where their salary should be, certainly the pay increase will help get them closer if it's 3.5 or whatever percentage that this suggests. But I, I understand what she's saying, because she's, she's saying that we're singling out a few employees to say that they get a percentage better. And unless it's based on job description, or criteria change, or promotion, it's difficult to understand why one person would get a significantly larger percentage than the others. And, and so it's not that I disagree with you. I think these people may be qualified for, for the salary that you're suggesting, and certainly I, I think that they probably are. The only thing that's difficult for me to understand is I think that this is also much larger than what the few employees that we've singled out are, because I think there's probably more people who, and, and of course, that's what she asked for last year, last year, and what she's asking for again this year, is, is that study that goes in and says, "This is their responsibilities, and this is where their pay should be," rather than singling out a few employees and saying, "Okay, these are the few that I see on a daily basis, and I know there, there's been a significant change in their responsibility." I just, I, I understand what she's, her point is, and, and I'm not opposed to the increases for these employees. It's just that I want the assurance that their job responsibilities have changed, and that they've taken on more responsibility, not just based on, "These are the people that I regularly see perform, so therefore I feel like they need the raise."
And I didn't want to go there, because I said I wasn't calling any names, but every one of these job increases are coming from this building.
There are a, a number from the water and sewer departments.
Well, I'm talking about this portion we're talking about. This portion are coming from this building here. And I find it hard to believe, in fact, I know it's impossible, nobody's going to convince me that we don't have these other department heads sitting out here that offices not in this building, who are not deserving of more than 3.5%. And then, here again, the three point, let's go across the board. But right now, until the study that was asked for on May the 17th, that was supposed to be brought to us, until that study is done, 3.5 across the board, because we have a variance here from 4%, if my figures are right, and I wasn't ever good in math, so you can wa, you can check me. 3.4%, the lowest is getting 4%, and the highest is getting 17.2% increase, and then vast majority are getting 3.5%. Now, you said we want to be fair. You keep saying that. Now, I would like the definition of fairness in this, what we get, what we're proposing, what you are proposing to do. I'm not for it. Where's the fairness? And when you're talking about changing job titles, some of these job titles have changed, and I've done a little research on that. When you ask for a comprehensive study, Mr. Lyons, a lot of times the firm names the So I, I just can't see us doing it, until we get the study. The study. And if the study says, "Everybody should come up, let's bring everybody up," and if it says we should have 40 people come up, let's bring them up, let's go by the study. And the information you presented us also, you were naming, well, these cities are named, and I was looking at that, Kingsport, Germantown, we can't compare ourselves to these cities. Germantown, I think about 40,000, Kingsport, what, Johnson City, 57,000, we can't compare ourselves to that. And if you do a comprehensive study, the people who do the study, they give you the cities, usually. We, we can't compare ourselves to these cities here. There's no way. So I just cannot go for that.
Well, the, the cities I think you're referring to are other cities in Tennessee in terms of what they've given for pay increases.
Right, right.
And the point of that chart is to say that Murfreesboro has been very aggressive in funding pay increases for employees.
I understand that. But the bottom line is, I still like to see 3.5 across the board. That's the bottom line, until the study is done. Until the study is done.
And of course, Madeline, I guess the flaw with the theory of is if you said, "Okay, well, let's give everybody a 5% raise and not give these, that, that significant raise." If you went with that theory, it's probably going to help bring the little guy up or the lower pay scale up, but it's not going to bring them up at the percentage of the greater pay scale. So you're still going to have the people on the high end getting a greater raise than the people at the bottom end, so your separation is going to continue to grow.
It's going to increase, it's going to, yeah.
And I, I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused as to how a percentage is ever, a percentage raise is ever going to help close that gap.
A percentage is the worst raise you can give, and I agree with you, Mr. Smollett, because the higher people being paid, they're going to get more, become, I don't like to use the word richer, and the lower people are going to become poor, as long as these benefits are increasing. Because you take a person making big money up in the hundreds, 3.5%, it's a big raise, and then you have increase on your benefits, they won't feel that increase on their benefits. But this man down here, it's going to kill them. It's going to kill them.
Any other comments from council?
I'm, first, I think Ms. Gels Harris brings up some good points. I, I will say, I've never been a fan, since I've been on council, of this pay schedule. I, I think, you know, this was done before several of us were ever on the city council, and I don't think there is a perfect pay schedule, but this one especially, I think, has been, for me, and, and I, on the other hand, I'm, I'm not good at science, so we sit here and talk about insurance and things like that, and I'm, it just goes over my head, but I'm pretty good with numbers. And I've really had a hard time working through this pay schedule, and, or pay plan, and even, you know, my go-to has been, over the, the six years, have always saying, "Well, let's get these employees, let's sit down with them and let them go through and see exactly where they are with HR." So I'll continue to do that. The, the thing that, that I have issues with, I do think that if there is a promotion, that there, there should be a way for us to reward someone for going above and beyond when their job description changes. And when I say job description, the one that just pops out is where my dad always told the story, Dad, my dad has been a banker in a small town for 30 years, and worked his way up from a teller to a vice president, and he always would joke that someone else would leave, and the guys would come down and say, "Guess what, old buddy, Mr. McFarland, we're promoting you, you're going to get paid the same, and we're not replacing that position that just left. So your workload doubles, but your pay stays the same." So that's the thing I think that we all, as a council, have to be cognizant of. For instance, if we're combining the street department with different departments within our, our city, that it's not fair for those individuals to take on more responsibility, supervise more employees, have more headaches, take on another budget that they now have to do, and not recognize that they have taken on more responsibility. So I wish there was some way that we could, could figure a way that when someone, their, their job description truly changes, you know, then there needs to be some way that we can, can do that. At the same time, I also think that, I don't think it's right to go through and say, "Well, when we brought this person on board, we just didn't get their salary correct, we need to pay them more." Because I could make that argument with, on the firefighter side, when someone gets promoted from a firefighter to a driver, and their responsibilities change, but their pay doesn't really change, and it's more of because they've been here a certain time period. So yes, that is a compression issue, but I don't want us to fall back on the compression issue and say, "Well, it's a compression issue, that's not fair, we'll just figure it out." So those are the, you know, when, when a detective, when someone gets promoted up to detective, and we've seen that on the police department, that they're, obviously their job duties have changed, but their pay doesn't change. So, or, or it's not commensurate with their, with the responsibilities they've taken on. So I, I think, I hope that's something the pay plan will, will address. On the other hand, I will say, I do think we have, and this is probably not a political answer to say, but I think we have phenomenal employees. But I also think, like any organization, we have some employees who don't do as a good, don't do as good a job as others. And that's just the real world. So the one thing that I don't want to do is to say that this person down here, that if you've got two people who are doing the same job, and this person busts their butt, just like the letter that we got from Chief Christman the other day about the firefighter who, or, excuse me, the police officer, who helped a couple with a hurt dog, that's going above and beyond. And when the individual came back to do that, so, but at, at the same time that we see, if I'm a police officer, and I'm like, "Well, you know, I'm going above and beyond, and I've got this person over here who does it," they do their minimum, and then they leave. So I want it to be able to, I think a performance plan is awesome, where people can come out, Chief Christman, or Chief Gaines, or whoever, to say, "This person's going above and beyond." And so, but I don't think we can do it where we're just picking people out. On the other thing, I would like you to address, and maybe go just for our viewing audience, because I think, I, I'm all for our employees, but I don't want to forget that we have, I don't know what the number is out in the city of Murfreesboro, but there are a lot of people who work hard in this city, who may not be getting 3.5%. So I want you just, maybe for the viewing public, to go over the hidden paycheck that you, the email that you sent us that shows that also what we give as a city, or the residents, I should say. You know, we, we like to say that we're paying the employees, but we're really not paying the employees, the residents are paying the employees. So maybe if you went over that, I, I would even like to know, Mr. Lyons, if you would maybe go into, how many sick days do we give? How many vacation days that we give? So that way you could, that way the public can know how our employees are treated.
Sure. Let me touch on one point you made earlier, Mr. McFarland, then I'll turn my attention to the, to the hidden paycheck. And you talked about, you know, the piece about promotions. As we look at, you know, the employees that are on this list, I think many of these, you know, are, are promotions. You're seeing title changes and additional responsibilities and compensation. So some of these, in my opinion, do fall under the category of, of a, of a promotion. We've got a copy of a document before you, it's got a date of July 26, 2012. Mr. Godwin, Ms. Russell, and their staff have been very good about trying to help our employees understand what you might call total rewards or total compensation. Certainly, our paycheck is one very visible thing that the city provides to us for the work we do for the community. But we also have a very robust benefits plan. So what they had done, and this is something I think Ms. Russell brought to us from the private sector, is really putting a cost to that for each individual employee, and personalizing a hidden paycheck for them and giving that to them, so that they could see not only what they see in their paycheck, but the benefits provided to them by the city and the cost for that. So the first, the top sheet, we've got several examples here, whether, when they were hired, whether they were in the pension plan or retirement plan, whether they had family health insurance coverage or single health insurance coverage. So you see a couple of different scenarios, we kind of wrote down the scenario in handwriting on there. But for the average city employee, the average city employee's got an annual salary of over $38,000 per year. In this example, the city provided benefits total over $28,000 per year. So again, that's real money in the budget that's in the document that you'll be considering on first reading this Thursday. So it's not just the salary. It's that $38,000 you see in the salary page, plus the $28,546 for city provided benefits, which means that job really to that employee is, is a total value, a total reward of almost $67,000 per year. It's more than just the salary. And so that's going to include their longevity pay, holidays, vacation, sick leave, the pension or retirement plan, health insurance, dental insurance, employee assistance program, long-term disability, social security, Medicare, workers' compensation. All those are costs that we've got to build into the budget as we start off in January trying to develop a budget that we could bring to you that balances. So this is something we wanted, you know, the HR department took the initiative to communicate with our employees so that they can see, that, well, they may look at their salary as $38,000, but really, the, the total reward to them is almost 60, $67,000.
Do you mind, just for giggles, that you'll go over the, the first, maybe six, just so, like longevity pay? And I think that's good for the council to understand, too. How, how much longevity do we, what's, how much do we pay per year?
Sure. The city pays longevity pay to reward and recognize years of service at a rate of $60 per completed year of service. So in this case, the employee's been there 11 years.
Okay.
Holidays, we've got, trying to think the total number of holidays that we've got.
Eleven.
Eleven? Eleven, eleven paid holidays. Vacation days are on a-
That's, that's 11. All, those are federal. Pardon me?
Eight-day holiday.
Which is Christmas, Christmas Eve, Thanksgiving.
Day after Thanksgiving.
Day after Thanksgiving.
It's not, no.
It's not, okay. So, right, okay. Just to give you a example, in the printing business, we had six and a half days paid holidays. Six and a half days. We had some of the, some of our printing companies gave 14 days, and gave three weeks, and did not survive. They went out of business because they couldn't keep up. So you have a choice there. I mean, 11 is, is probably not the most generous, but with the vacation holidays also included, you, you have to consider that. So please go ahead.
Sure. Vacation is, initially, it's one day per month, so you'll get 12, 12 days.
Two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks per year, if I stand corrected. Mr. Godwin may want to come to the podium and help me with some of this. I can see this right now.
We're going to make you prove your worth, Mr. Godwin.
Yes, sir. And the, and the vacation is something that increases as your years of service with the city increase.
I just want to point out, Mr. Lyons mentioned this, that this was a challenge for our department, because we found out internally that the city spent almost $50,000 five years ago to produce this information. So with Ms. Russell's help, and also Mr. Lilly's staff, we saved a significant amount of money to produce this internally. But total rewards, we think it's very important to communicate every year. We were also challenged, I believe Mr. Washington challenged us to do this in response to another community who had spoken about a percentage of base salary, but the average is just over 50%. And that's a very significant number, because a lot in the private sector in the 35 and 40% range, and some cities would like to be much more aggressive than that, but over 50- But over 50% represents what I think is a very aggressive benefit load to base salary.
50% additional over and above salary is what you're saying.
Yes, sir. And that's what all of the lines...
50% benefit cost.
Yes, sir.
Not salaries, the benefit package. Okay.
The benefit package is worth approximately 52% of base annual budgeted salary, when it's accumulated.
So we were on vacation, Mr. Godwin, we were talking about vacation.
Vacation, of course, is based on the years of service, and the number of years that you complete, you're eligible, of course, for two weeks, I think, after the first year of completed service with the city, and then it accumulates based on additional numbers of years of service.
Does it carry over?
It does carry over. There is a provision, though, if you don't use a certain, if you don't use at least five days in a year, you're subject to lose or forfeit the vacation. But that is often not a very frequent situation for most people.
Sick leave was next.
Sick leave, there's different accruals based on the number of hours worked. Mr. McFarland, each one's work schedules are different, but as Mr. Lyons started to point out, it's typically worth one sick day per month of working time. The sick leave benefit is a very attractive and very important benefit for city employees. There is not a limit to the amount of sick leave that can be accrued by a city employee, and as you may be aware, some city employees, when they approach or reach retirement age, with respect to also the years of service with the city, do count on accrued sick leave in order to run out benefits time. So once again, sick leave is a very attractive benefit for a majority of city employees, but the accrual is typically one sick day accrued for every month of work, regardless of the number of hours that you are scheduled to work.
And the pension has been running at about 11% of whatever your salary is, and that will change just based on whether we have those in the 401K defined contribution or those in the older defined benefit pension plan.
Correct.
So if you look at that pension retirement, you get an excellent 11% over and above your salary. Then the medical expense, this shows about $14,000, $15,000, of which the employee pays.
20%, Mayor, and so that amount would represent the amount that's contributed for by the city. You might recall, we put in front of council a proposal for that 80/20 cost share to continue for this upcoming budget year.
And that does not, and there's no fluff in that, because that's actual expense to the medical expense of the city.
It is, it's all in the insurance fund. Correct.
Does that kind of go through for you, Mr. McFarland?
And I think that helps not only me, but that's honestly the first time, I knew what all these were, but that's really the first time I can remember that we've actually said, hey, here's where we are. So it lets, you know, not only us, but lets the residents know, this is what we are doing. So...
I think Mr. Washington was out of the room, but we did, we are very proud of the number for an important reason. That's because oftentimes we get other communities that like to discuss how attractive their benefits are. We're very proud of our benefits. And certainly last October, we talked about the number of benefit increases or improvements. We intend to continue that information to council and to provide that to you at least once a year. But it's our desire right now to continue the hidden paycheck on an annual basis, and just prior to the new fiscal year.
All right. Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Godwin. Any other comments on this, these particular, there's 10, I think there's 10 individuals?
In the general fund and then the water...
In the general fund. And before we go on to the water and sewer department, let's just talk about these general fund. Any other comments from council regarding these general fund promotions, new positions, and market adjustments? I want to thank the council for all of their comments, because I think all of us consider that each time we look at any salary and we look at what people do. And all of us are aware, when we ask the city manager to respond, or somebody from one of our departments to respond to one of our business owners, or residents, or somebody who visits, they got to take the time out to help us explain what our procedures and policies are, and how they make sense, and how they relate to the service delivery that we have as a city. So all of us know that, I think all of our employees are exceptional. They make us look good as council members, because we get a lot of comments from folks who tell us how proud they are when they meet a city employee. There are very few occasions when, other than a speeding ticket, when they tell us they're not very proud of one of our city employees. So I think we're all exceptional. I know Ms. Harris is heartfelt in her concerns, I appreciate her sharing those with us, Mr. Smollett, Mr. McFarland. There may be other comments, but that is as the city manager has presented, and we'll have an opportunity to talk about that on Thursday night, when we do look through any other changes that have been suggested.
One more question, ma'am.
The budget. Yes, Ms. Harris.
Of these, you gave Burris and Thompson these positions to look at, right? How was, how were these positions pulled out and others not?
Those were the ones that we had suspected there was some change and asked him to look at those.
Yeah, that's what my question is, what suspicions did we have about them that made them so outstanding?
For instance, I started off earlier in the HR department, looking at reorganizing how that department was being run. That's why you'll see a number of folks in there from HR, likewise, why you see a number of folks in the water and sewer department, is Mr. Gore started his term as the director, and who was assigned what work and who was doing certain things, that's how we came to that.
Were the department heads brought in to ask them what they thought?
I had, you know, in budget this year, had, and that's why, you know, there's another document where we have other promotions in the budget, those came from your department heads. There were other individuals that you'll see that we've, and it's in your, it's in your budget document, those are the ones that were pretty routine, that we shared with you that are being recommended. There are other city departments represented beyond just admin and folks here at City Hall.
Okay, and so I'll leave here with a good understanding. The study, pay study that we asked for last year has not been done.
We indicated last year we were going to do the every other year update as we typically would do, and that's what was funded in the budget, and that's what was completed and sent to you in May.
I know, but I'm saying, we asked for the study to be done last May, and I'm just asking, that study was not done. But, but these increases were based off of a study, is what I'm saying. The study that we asked for has not been done, is that correct?
No, ma'am, I don't think we're talking about the same thing. Let me try to declare about what...
I'm talking about the study that we asked for, the compensation study of the employees, is what we asked for on May 17. That has not been done, right? Because we asked for that study, and we said, once we receive the results, we were going to look at, and that study would show all the employees.
Which is where we got to the add a step, drop a step. We did do the every other year update with Burris and Thompson. That was what was funded in the budget last year.
No, I'm just asking about the study that was asked for on May the 17th, to be brought back to the council, and before we made any more pay increases, we asked for this study to be done. So the study has not been done, but we're still going to bring people up. That's my question.
What was included in the budget was the every other year update with Mr. Thompson. It's not a very large dollar amount. That's where they took a look and refreshed the cities that were surveyed, we look at the benchmark list of cities, and every single employee saw the three and a half percent add a step, drop a step to get our pay plan more competitive.
Now, the question I'm asking, the pay study that you had a directive to do last year, has that study been done that is supposed to equally bring everybody up? Has that study been done that we asked for on May the 17th?
The budget last year included a market-based analysis. Ms. Harris is, I've indicated, to do the complete overhaul of a classification and compensation study, we believe to be in the $70,000 range, that was not in your budget last year.
$70,000, Mr. Lyons, is nothing how we spend money in the city. That's nothing for how we spend money in the city. And if it was that important, I think it would have been well worth it. But again, my question is, the study that was requested, before we brought anybody over and beyond, because here again, we're dealing with increases from, the lowest is getting 4%, and the highest is getting 17.2%, and you can check my math.
Your numbers are accurate.
But could I interject here just for a minute? We have, over the last, probably eight years, used a similar study every year to look at the range of everybody's pay. And I think possibly that in looking at those minutes, what we were talking about was a refreshing or a asking, Burris, what if any major changes that he had been alerted to over and above what we already have? And you can see in this presentation where the fiscal year 14 minimum is a part of that study, and where it says fiscal year 14 maximum, that is also a part of that study. So what we generally ask for, Ms. Harrison, and I certainly understand your question, but generally is to go back to this document that we've been using year after year after year after year.
Which doesn't work.
Well, that's...
That's why we asked for, that's why we asked for last year to do this study, and it had specifics on what we were looking for, you know.
But what we asked for was the refreshing of the document that we had been using.
No, sir, not by this, these minutes. We didn't, I don't see anywhere in here where it's saying a refresher.
Well, it's to go back and use the only document that we've been using.
We didn't ask for the document we've been, we've been using. We asked for a case, a study to show what our, to bring our employees up based on the study, comprehensive study that they were going to do, to make adjustments based on the outcome of the study. And, and maybe that's, maybe that's what the problem is, we're doing what we've always done. You referenced eight years ago. Eight years ago, we didn't have these modern phones we have in the IT department. We can't run a city of 110,000 that's increasing three and four percent a year, based on eight years ago. I am very uncomfortable with this without that study to see where all employees are and bringing everybody up. And I rest my, I'm just uncomfortable with it. I'm not for it. I'm not uncomfortable, I'm not for it.
Before that, we had, we had no document that we used. And so, in looking at what was available, we selected somebody to give us a range which at least gave us some comparison to other peer cities. You had a list of those that were...
And that range bothers me.
Well, I'm sure there are a lot of things that, but what I'm saying is, that's what we've used, so I...
But just because, Mayor, we've always used it, we need to come up to 2013 and 14 on these studies. So can you see the fairness, Mayor, giving everybody 3.5% and somebody's going to get 17.2 out of this? You see the fairness?
I do.
Difference in men and women. I'm going to leave it like that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anything else? All right. Mr. Gore, I don't know that we want to discuss all of your folks in particular, but you have made a suggestion to us, and it's been included in a revision, I suppose, of your water and sewer department, and you may want to speak to that. Obviously, we've had a lot of comments regarding salaries and how proud we are of all our folks, and I had a couple of water and sewer employees in my yard today, and I'm certainly proud of Jeff and Kenneth, as they came by and brought the big truck by, and when you see the big truck, you always wonder what's going to happen. So they did an excellent job, and they asked me specifically to mention to you what a great job they did. And I was going to do that, I was going to do that anyway, but since they've asked me, that's just a double dip, and I was aware of Jeff, but Kenneth I wasn't aware of, so I just want to tell you what a great job Jeff and Kenneth were doing in my yard today.
I'll get him a hearty biscuit in the morning.
They were absolutely fantastic, and all your department that we worked with, of all the water you've got to deal with, you have to deal with drinking water, and wastewater, and storm water, and reuse water, and I'm sure there's some more waters of the...
It's, I'm sure we'll invent another water here shortly.
There's no question, I don't think we're going to run out of colors for pipe anytime soon.
I like the lavender.
The lavender is nice, that's right. So why don't you go through your water and sewer department, and what your suggestion is to this council for your budget?
Well, I guess I'll give you the history, and this may just be the naivete or the overzealousness of a new water and sewer director. But we had a vision, and Joe Kirsten was part of that vision, and city administration and the HR department, we all worked hand in hand together. But starting probably back pretty early on, September of last year, I sat down with all of the division leaders, superintendents, and supervisors, plant managers, and I said, guys, we need to, I want to, I want to update all our job descriptions and get them, get them to where, you know, if there's a 12, or 13, or 15-year-old job description, let's, let's get it up to date, and let's define what our employees do versus maybe what an antiquated job description described some years back. So, over the next month or two, all the superintendents and supervisors brought forward the job descriptions. And as a result, we condensed some, we combined some, we have 64 job descriptions in the water and sewer department. And we had the criminal offense language that we wanted to include as well. And then I, as manager, as the director, went through all of those job descriptions of the 64. We did, there was 18 that I felt the needle moved to some degree, where comparing the old job description to comparing the new job description, I asked city administration, human resource director, if we could have a compensation review based on that, that new, newly revised job description. Four of the 18 were really, I would say, reclassifications, where there was assistant director level that didn't have a, it was, it was not, the job description didn't exist. And we had our new customer service clerk, lead customer service clerk, and meter reader, field service, crew leader. So four of the 18 were kind of new, oh, we did have the effective utility management coordinator as well. So around 14, and those are listed on your sheet, those maintenance, you know, going from a plant mechanic, plant electrician, to a maintenance technician, we tried to revise it so that we got current with what I would say is industry nomenclature for the job descriptions, so that even the title was somewhat, I would say, antiquated or not, not up to, up to date with the industry terms. So we submitted, again, it was my discretion as to which of the 64 I felt warranted a study, and I had no expectations going into the Burris and Thompson study, but if they came back and said that the pay, the pay scale or the pay range was appropriate as it currently stood, then I was satisfied with that. I'm not an, I'm not an expert in compensation studies. Now, we did get a first pass, and I thought some of them, I questioned some of the, some of the analysis, and I think we went back and forth a couple of times and got it in line with where we thought, you know, the needle moved a little too much, maybe. But bottom line is, we went through that, that process, and we went to the employee handbook, and it's section 5,003F, section F, I believe, which basically said, you take the person's current existing step, you find the closest step on the existing, I mean, the new pay scale, and then you can move them forward to the next pay step. So most of these percentages that are over three and a half is because there's just, they may have been within two steps... been within two steps, you went back to the closest and then went, went up some. So it may result in a four, a four and a half percent increase. Some of the ones that were at step one of the old pay scale, the, the new pay scale shifted to such a degree that to move them to the new step one resulted in a pretty high percentage. But, but I would say that that actually was an advantage to the lower end step, the, the frontline folks on, on the, on the step one level. The assistant directors are a little different. They were due a 3.5% and, and we requested that they be given an additional 3.5% based on the fact that they were being promoted to assistant director level, taking on more responsibilities. I don't know if I can really go into any more detail than that. I've got a real big spreadsheet. I could be happy to show you all how we applied the employee section to those, to those pay steps, and I can, I can, I can drill down on anything you'd like to look at.
Any questions for Mr. Gore regarding his recommendations? And you can fund these out of your revenues?
Yes, sir. I think it was a $43,000 or so above-
It's 46, 252.
Above the 3.5%. Yes, sir.
And that'll be before FICA. That's just the salary change, the corresponding FICA comes along with that.
Yes.
Obviously, there's a little bit of a reorganization here in title changes and, and responsibilities. And that's to be expected, I think, a little bit when you have a, a change in leadership. I appreciate Mr. Gore's attention to this, and I'm certain his employees do also. There may be other questions from the council regarding what the department is doing, and now would be a good time to bring those up. If there is nothing else, thank you, Mr. Gore.
Thank you all.
Free to go, free to stay. All right. Mr. Lyons, you want to continue?
Mayor, I believe that was the, we're down now kind of to the summary piece of this. I think what I heard you say, again, we won't make any formal changes now, but, you know, we've talked about the purchasing agent, the comprehensive plan, three, I think, changes to the outside agencies. I've shared with you my recommendation on the new positions and market adjustment for both the general fund and the similar ones for water and sewer. And then if there were any other changes that the council wanted, this would be a good time to hear, hear from you all.
All right. Any other amendments to be considered by the council, from the council? Mr. McFarland?
I had met with several people with CASA, and unfortunately, the economy's getting court-appointed special advocates. They provide assistance with children whose parents, whether it be through violence, abuse, have been, are in the judicial system. So these are situations that we hope we never find our children a part of. But with the economy in the situation that it has been, unfortunately, those instances have grown. And I know Chief Chrisman is, is very active in that, General Weitzel is, but they are wanting to start a new initiative. And so I said that I would support that and would like to add $2,500 to their approved amount, please.
That's item 36 on our list of outside agencies.
And that would be with the, not, that would be with the council's support, obviously.
I do have a request. We, we do have them funded for the amount they requested.
Okay.
So if that is something you want to consider, I think they should resubmit their application to show how they would use the extra funds and request the extra amount.
Okay. Could we go ahead and say that we, if they turn in that application, that we would approve that to that amount, please?
We're going to consider all those on, on Thursday night, so if you'll, you'll be in touch with them.
Shame with some of the others before you got, we basically just had a consensus of how we felt and not taking formal action on it. But I don't think anybody, speaking for myself, disagrees as long as any of those requirements that look in the table of life.
I will contact them and have that done before Thursday.
That'd be great.
All right. Anything else? Do we have any other items at this time to be considered?
No, we can't. This is a budget-only meeting.
See, that's what I'm talking about.
I guess she told you.
We will also review the city manager's salary, I suppose, at the next meeting and possibly would suggest that his salary increase may be at 3.5% that other, most other employees are receiving. But that's a consideration for the council to set the city manager's salary. So I leave you to your thoughts, and we will meet on Thursday night at 7:00 PM. That'll be the 4th, 5th, June the 6th. And I look forward to seeing you all at that time. And thank you, staff, for being so patient and faithful to stay with us.